My name is Mary Garcia and I am a member of the IPDA and secretary on our executive board. On November second, twenty twenty-two, five city labor unions came together to express their frustrations with how we've been treated by the city of Ithaca. This came to be from years of feeling ignored, undervalued, and underpaid by city administration, and we have tirelessly and honorably served. First off, I would like to thank the members of council who recognize and have made efforts to resolve the prevalent, obvious issues of mistreatment of laborers in the city. But I'd be remiss to say that I am disappointed in members of city administration who have modded and tried those who spoke. Was the tone of all speakers pleasant and calm? No. However, if you felt neglected and unheard for years, how did you react? After all, these unions have tried to play nice and negotiate fairly many times in the past. This method of communication is clearly not working. To call the people who plow the streets in prison conditions, clean your toilets, respond to emergencies, and build your office furniture in angry mob and obscene spectacle through the lack of empathy and compassion in City Hall's administration. Empathy and compassion are two characteristics we look for when recruiting new officers to join our police force. I highly urge that City Hall starts adopting these values as well. City employees are sick of hearing the city has no money for wage increases. Let's not forget the council just passed a motion to spend fifty thousand dollars for a second in town get a police chief there. Meanwhile, qualified candidates are left on the table. Additionally, the city has spent approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the ongoing disciplinary doing of PBA member Sarah Cruz. Members of the council are clear to investigate this spending further. City administration needs to stop creating union employees that likely are dispensable. We are not. No one is breaking another door to work for the city of Ithaca. Stop saying it's a nationwide problem. We have friends in other municipalities. You aren't fooling us. It's much worse here.
I'll just point out that if you have five speakers, then you actually have seven minutes, not the three-minute limit. And Scott, you'll make that adjustment? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be using the time of my members behind me. My name is Tom Gonzella, president of the Ithaca PBA and a member of the Ithaca Public Workers Coalition. We're here tonight because as the governing body and administration, the message we've gotten from you is that you don't care. We know that some of you individually care deeply and are being stonewalled for making progress by the city attorney and the mayor. However, as the overall governing body of elected officials and policymakers, it appears to us that the common council is either unable or unwilling to make progress for the workers in the city of Ithaca and our community. Since twenty twenty, DPW's workers have been without a contract or raises. They're down almost thirty positions and suffering morale issues. Since twenty twenty-one, members of the Executive Association have gone without a contract or raises. These workers have been heavily abused and neglected by the city. The firefighters have also been without a contract since twenty twenty. My members, the police officers, went without raises for ten years after making substantial concessions. We settled an agreement to move forward, which expires at the end of this year. We have all worked through the pandemic. We continue to show up each day because many of us made an oath and got into public service for our community. It's no secret IPD still cannot recruit and retain. A patrol division that should be staffed with at least forty-five officers has been relegated to twenty-three. Two thousand eleven, IPD staffing was at seventy-one swarm members. Currently, we're at forty-four swarm members to police a city of thirty thousand plus. Between now and twenty twenty-six, we expect at least another thirteen retirements from the Ithaca Police Department. You know all of this, though. Everyone knows this. The council, the mayor, HR, the chief of staff. All the unions have told you time and time again how bad this is. It's been ninety days. What have you done? The public workers still cannot effectively and safely do our jobs in the city. You stressed us all to the max. It's impacted our health, our families, and the personal lives of every worker standing behind me tonight. It's also impacting our community. Ithaca is becoming increasingly unsafe as public safety services continue to deteriorate, namely police and fire. Why do you keep asking us what can we do to fix this? When we keep telling you we want fair and respectful treatment, we want competitive wages and benefits, and we want to be able to perform the jobs that we are hired to do so our community can thrive. When you tell us specifically the PBA that we have an emergency and we realize that IPD is in crisis, what can we do to fix this? Why won't you listen to us? I've been asking to begin negotiations for a success or labor agreement since last year because all the problems I've described have been a problem last year and even before them. A long-term collective bargaining agreement would help stabilize the workforce and show potential applicants that the city cares about its police officers and is investing in the workforce. It could make us competitive again. I've pleaded with you to join the PBA in a statement of partnership and collaboration to dispel the rumors around reimagining, to affirm our commitment to reimagining public safety reforms that make sense, and to send a signal to current and future police officers that Ithaca supports its law enforcement and that the Ithaca Police Department isn't going anywhere. I've asked mayor and council for both of these things, and we haven't seen any progress. Despite us showing up and telling you that we don't want attorneys, you spend more taxpayer money to retain Jim Romer's firm and a resolution written by the city attorney himself was still one of the main barriers to progress. The PBA has been negotiating with Jim Romer and his firm for over a decade. Despite him being at the table, the process has always been driven by the city attorney, who sits tonight presiding above the council and the workers. We have no assurances that the city attorney still isn't in control behind the scenes, and you've made no progress in ninety days to lead us to believe otherwise. Jim Romer's firm is the same firm that's been representing the city in termination cases against Ithaca police officers. One such case is against one of my members, Sarah Cruz, who's here tonight, a seventeen-year veteran of the Ithaca Police Department and member of the LGBTQ-plus community, who objected to the service policies at IPD and sought change to better accommodate officers and community members who identify differently than traditional gender roles. The city attorney and the mayor want to strip Sarah Cruz of her pension and post-employment healthcare benefits they are contractually bound to provide because she is different and because she stood up for what she believes in. Sarah Cruz sought aggressive change. She objected but continued to do her work until she was pushed to the point of not being able to tolerate the working environment anymore. The city attorney has built a case against her, one of the only disciplinary cases to be litigated by outside counsel, and in doing so, has already spent approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money. After several arbitration sessions, the arbitrator in the matter has strongly recommended to both parties that we sit down and begin settlement discussions. He has also signaled to both parties he is not going to be terminating Sarah Cruz. On the night before the first conference, the city attorney made his intentions clear and indicated that the only way a settlement would be reached is if Sarah Cruz agreed to a near-term resignation, stripping her of her pension and post-employment healthcare. We've since learned that the city is citing economic and policy reasons for their stance in this case. There are several more hearing dates to be conducted, and we estimate that when it's all said and done, the city will expend at least another quarter million dollars. Prior to Sarah objecting to the service policies, she had no significant performance or disciplinary issues. So how did we get here? The answer is sitting in the corner of the room. The city attorney wants to send a message to Sarah Cruz, to workers who stand up for what they believe in, and to the unions that represent them. The message is this: How dare you question the city of Ithaca? How dare you stand up for what you believe in or bring litigation against the city? To anyone who tries to sue the city and who questions city policies for whatever reason, the message is this: We will bury you in litigation debt and strip you of your pension and benefits. The message is no matter who you are or what you represent, we will smash them into the ground and will never let you back up. We will destroy you, your reputation, your finances, and in the process, we'll also leave the union representing you of its funds, sending both you and your labor organization into financial ruin. This is not only cruel, it's union busting. Who's running the city? What oversight is there on the money being expended in this case? Stop talking about Band-Aid fixes and baby steps to solve these problems. We're past that. We're past that. It's insulting. Council, stop letting the city attorney and the mayor continue to destroy our community and dictate policy to you.
Thank you, Tommy.
You are the elected governing body, and you can control policy.
You're right. Thank you.
Start embracing the values that you support
Your time has expired.
that you report to support in public. Thank you.
And once again, speakers will have three minutes, and I ask for some I ask the public not to interrupt speakers during their time. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak. My name is Kevin Eisen. I'm the field director for the New York State. Hello, I'm Kevin Eisen. I'm the field director for the New York State AFL-CIO. To give you a little what that means, I cover the entire state from Buffalo to Long Island with two and a half million members. And I've never seen all five unions at a city come together like they have here. And that's why we're here. They've inspired us. They put together the Coalition of Public Workers and the courage to demand the dignity and respect from the city of Ithaca. The same level of respect that they show the residents they serve every day. Almost a year ago, these workers came to us to ask for help, each describing a situation in the city where they felt that their voices weren't being heard, that their membership was being disrespected at the bargaining table and during normal labor management interactions. It was clear to us that something wasn't right in the city of Ithaca, and we needed to support their efforts. That's why we helped develop this coalition and why it's growing every day in the city, partnering with allies and community members. The Labor Movement in New York, all two-point-five million members and their families from Buffalo to Long Island and everywhere in between, including the more than thirty-two hundred Ithaca workers from the building trades, public sector, and private sector that call Ithaca their home are watching this situation carefully and supporting these workers standing up for their rights peacefully and courageously. We can proudly declare that Ithaca workers are union strong, and we implore the elected officials listening to worker statements today to create real change in the relationship with your workers. They are ready to be willing to partners to make this city of Ithaca a better place for residents and workers. Tonight will be an inspiring night, but it's not the end. We will not stop here. We will not rest. We will not waver until the workers of the city have felt their voice heard. I'll use background for rest of my time.
I may apologize if I'm going to mispronounce this name. Cinch? Friend? Merrill?
I don't picture it. Cindy French?
Cindy French?
Yeah.
Sorry, I can't read your.
Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you, Cindy.
My name is Cindy French, and I've been employed as a custodian with the city of Ithaca for a little over five years. I'm a member of the PDW-CSDA Union. I currently make seventeen dollars and twelve cents an hour. After five years, I've done all my step-offs. There is no room to grow until I hit my longevity that will be in another five years. So I'm currently at this point in time applying for another position inside the city that is only going to maybe give me eighty, fifty cents, seventy-five cents an hour more per hour. I am a good cleaner. I have a lot of pride in my work. I work a part-time job. I am almost making the same amount of money in my part-time job that is not stable and from retirement. I have been in buildings where people appreciate my work. They want me in the building, you know, I mean, I've got a lot of respect from Ithaca Police Department. I've been in the building. I've cleaned. I've watched a lot of stuff. I've watched what a lot with police officers go through. I have actually been escorted out of the building because of the fact that they were being surrounded during some of the riots. I have dealt with some of the COVID stuff going on. You know, and I feel that you employees of the city have turned around and they all have really unique jobs that do a lot of stuff that are unique kind of thing. And this is how we're kind of getting paid back for what we do, you know? I, you know, we don't have enough to even really make it on what we're making. I mean, I worked two jobs to make it. If I got a little more money, I could cut down either or quit that part-time job. And I wouldn't be so tired that I can even get better to this day. And this is the position I'm in. So and I just, you know, without a contract being settled or an increase of money that's keeping up with a living wage, you know, basically, I go to work and for an hour's worth of work, I'm going to buy dozen ham bags, a gallon of milk, and maybe a loaf of bread if I'm lucky. You know, and other places are actually the Times-Town Courthouse is a nineteen oh-two or nineteen twelve an hour for a position I've been doing starting out. I couldn't, if I could get in there, would make more than what I made even starting five years ago. Thank you.
My name is Brandon McGovern. I am the UUP, that's United University Professions Vice President for Professionals, and I serve on both the Midstate and Room Toyota ASL-CIO Central Label Council. Ithaca has a positive reputation as one of the most progressive towns in the Northeast, but it has also deservedly gained an equally negative reputation for its egregious treatment of its public workers. Statewide organized labor has taken notice of the city of Ithaca's treatment of its public workers, particularly of those represented by the Ithaca Police Benevolance Association, the Ithaca Professional Firefighters Association, the Executive Association, and the CSDA Local One Thousand DPW Unit and Administrative Unit. Organized labor will continue to converge on Ithaca, including at these common council meetings and in support of any and all Ithaca Public Workers Coalition events until the city of Ithaca implements changes in policy and the overall philosophy of how the city of Ithaca interacts with and treats its workers. I close by asking you, in the name of all that is decent, to honor your workers' dignity and to treat them with the respect that they earn and that they certainly deserve. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Jean Grace, the president of the Executive Association Bargaining Unit. I would like to thank the council members that have individually reached out after labor-stressed appearance at the common council meeting in November. But here we are again to address the labor issue of unfair contract negotiations, which have not substantially changed since we came here three months ago. City administration's answer to the problem was to switch out one lawyer for another. All the labor groups that had expired contracts came to the December meeting to tell you that swapping out lawyers was not something that we felt would address or would fully address our concerns. Before voting on the action, there was council discussion about how much concern there was that the employees were out of contract and that needed to be rectified quickly. Speaking for myself, I was very frustrated at hearing those discussions since the city had a history of postponing the start of negotiations until after contracts had expired. My own group did not get a meeting, was not able to get a meeting with the city until our contract had been expired for four months. Now there was a sudden urgency to fund a lawyer and to keep things going for the sake of the worker. It's fine for my group to wait four months for initial meeting with the city, but it's very important that we get this new lawyer and that we meet very quickly, even before a council liaison has been appointed to observe the negotiations. Has a council liaison been appointed? Nothing officially has been communicated to any of the labor leaders. The solution seemed to be top-down, but the workers don't know what's best for themselves. What we were really asking for is to include workers in a conversation with city administration, city managers, council people to come up with better ways to engage in contract negotiations. In the three months since we first brought this issue to the forefront, that has still not happened. Please meet with us, listen to us, work with us, so that we don't feel like we need to be here airing our grievances in a public forum. Thank you.
Lopper, George Edgar, and Tom Basher. Are you speaking as a group?
Individually.
Individually? Okay. So you will have three minutes, Tess.
You're good.
Good evening. My name is Tess Lopper, and I've been a firefighter in Yanty in the city of Ithaca for about two years now. As a wife and mother of a young daughter, I'm sharing with you my personal experiences stemming from a much larger issue that our city workers have been dealing with. I had felt they had coming to work into Central Station at first, but that changed very quickly. Within the first few months of working at Central, I had an incident happen in the parking lot. I was walking to my truck at the far end of the parking lot after work and saw that there were three men meeting on my truck. One of the drivers near, on the driver's side, near the back door and the truck bed, the other two on the passenger side adjacent to the first car. I'd seen the men across the street and sat before. As I walked over, they noticed me approach, so I said, this is my truck, and I'm about to leave. All three looked at me dismissively and continued on with their conversation. I waited a few seconds and thought, please move. This is my truck. I'm trying to leave. They stopped their conversation, and the man closed it to me, flapped my truck while starting to walk away, all while calling me a stupid cunt. One of the other men on the passenger side stayed the longest, and he just stared at me. When he finally started to push off the truck and leave, he walked next to the truck for a second while smiling and left. I let out a big breath that I didn't know I was holding, quickly got in, locked the doors, and drove home. When I arrived home, I was rounding the passenger side of the truck and saw the section of my brand new truck that I had treated myself for being hired with key. It was then I knew why the man was smiling when he was walking away. I did report the incident, and the city's solution was to get everyone a whistle. Since that first exposure, I've driven into work with people sleeping on old mattresses and makeshift beds in the strip of lawn between State Street and our parking lot. Witnessed a campfire made in that same strip of lawn. The IFT was called to extinguish later. I've seen multiple people yearning and defecating in various locations around the perimeter of the parking lot. We have seen people walking through the lot, checking our vehicle door handles. We found used needles, stepped on broken glass from smashed liquor bottles, and had to walk over bloodstains from stabbings and shootings in our parking lot. This is the same parking lot that my nine-month-old daughter is passed between me and my husband during our shift changes. Would you feel okay about walking to your car in these conditions? How about having your loved ones in this environment? I've dedicated my life, like so many others, to serve and protect this city and its residents. It would be appreciated if the city did the same in return for its dedicated employees. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Good evening, everyone. George Edgar, Assistant Fire Chief and giving your president of the Ithaca Fire Fighter. Just wanted to know that the fact that we're here tonight should be a red flag to you. This is nothing I want to do. It causes me stress, but I think it's good that I come here and speak. As I step back and look at the situation that's going on, and I'm tired of working at the two-thousand-foot view when I'm in charge of emergency scenes, I have these questions. Why did the city hire Jim Romer? He has a reputation for being anti-union. He tried to get himself a state pension. You can Google that. The city hired him for the IPD Sarah Cruz termination, which I worked in College Town for eight years and worked with her many times, never had a negative interaction and always likes getting her. But she was most helpful. And he goes to Hawaii every year for two months. Will city employees be getting that two-month Hawaii vacation? Wow, what a statement that makes when you step back and look at it. It's unbelievable. And why haven't the unions been notified of the labor liaison? I think that's an important thing, and I'm looking forward to our first negotiation session to have them there. Why hasn't this been done? Why is there such a rush? Again, when you step back and look at it, it says, and we don't really care. We're just trying to we'll see about people happy. And looking through old council minutes and agenda, April sixth, twenty twenty-two, the authorization of the transitional rule for healthcare insurance plans collection for managerial and confidential. Wow, that seems really weird. And then when you look back maybe a month before at the meeting and you see that the confidential was left out, then one of the council people brought it out and you went back in the back room and talked about it. Why is just that group getting it? Why is it just till the end of the year? Is someone in HR, is someone in the controllers office retiring? That seems really weird, really fishy, and it doesn't sit well, and I have a lot of questions about that. It seems quite obvious that if nothing changes, you don't want us here and you don't want us working. I'm in the position now. I told you about my health. Workers' comp is worthless. I had to start using my group property due because my family doctor, my surgeon wouldn't see me because people don't take comp anymore. So with that being said, you're supposed to have six chiefs at work. You only have five right now because there's not enough people with time and grade. If things don't change, I'll try to like leaving this year. I'll leave that on you to sort out how to run the department. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilpersons, friends, coworkers. My name is Tom Basher. I'm Assistant Chief of the Fire Department. I'm not much of a talker, so I'll try and get as quick as I can for you. I need my glasses. I'm sorry. I'm going to be retiring this month after twenty-four years of serving and giving to the Ithaca community. Retirement after twenty years isn't an arbitrary number. It's twenty years for a reason. What we do out there is different. What we do out there is different from what you guys have to experience. And I got to be honest, our families have to adapt and accommodate to our profession as well. This job has taken especially hard toll on us and them. The things that we have to see and do, they don't go away. They don't linger. They accumulate, and then they compound on us. PTSD is a real thing, and many of you saw the anguish on faces of fellow players during a football game not that long ago. Think about that. Think about stressful times in your lives and how you felt. We have to see that hundreds of times throughout our career. It takes a toll. Emergency responders' suicide rates are off the charts. The physicality of this job, not just the mental stress, is tremendous. The damage it does to us stays with us long after we retire. It's why we need the health insurance. It's not just fighting fires. It's wearing heavy gear, air packs, carrying equipment, climbing stairs and ladders, riding apparatus over terrible Ithaca roads. It takes an incredible, tremendous toll on our bodies. Statistically, we have a ten-year shorter lifespan than you. Ten years shorter lifespan than you. We're going to get some sort of cancer. The CDC and the WHO now recognize my job as a carcinogen. We signed on for this knowing some risks, but not all of them. The amount of firefighters that we have worked with here in Ithaca that have gotten cancer would blow you away. We signed on knowing that if we did our jobs faithfully, that at the end, the state would provide us with a little pension and you, the city, would provide us with quality healthcare that we will need because of the toll this job takes on us that we did for you. I've been to some of your houses. I've taken care of some of your family members. We've done this for you. You've lived under a blanket of comfort and protection that all of these city workers provided. And now you want to change the rules and affect the very people who provided it? As I look back on a quarter century of giving to this city, I have good memories, and I got some tough ones too, man. I do look forward to retirement, and I do wish all of you well. We know many of the issues we spoke about tonight, they were not all under your watch. But going forward, if you find yourself now wondering if the previous administration gave enough, do you find yourself wondering if you are giving enough to your most important resource? Know this, you're not giving us anything. We earned it.
So uncle, mayor? The DPW appreciates.
Thank you.
The DPW appreciates and continues to support my community. Their kindness and compassion shows supporting us is inspiring. The city residents can be just assured that the vital services we provide will continue without fail. The DPW is hopeful that an agreement can be reached with the city that will benefit both parties. Our hard-working DPW employees have stepped up under extremely low staff shortage and financial hardships to keep our city streets safe and utilities running. shortage and financial hardships to keep our city streets safe and utilities running. I'm very proud to represent such a great group of hard-working men and women. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak remotely. All right, thank you. Mostly want to say thank you to the other union representatives who already spoke before me. I'll be very brief. Thank you, Common Council Members. The moment of silence, Mayor, for Tyree Nichols. It was very, very solemn and touching. The Lifetime Achievement Award as well. Um, and the Speakers for Unbroken Promise Initiative was quite touching. Just want to say the negotiating team for the Executive Association has met one time in three months. So we can do better. Trying to move any city projects or any personal projects in your house. Uh, as you're, I'm in a, in a cup, my couple, my wife or partner would be very mad at me if it took three months to get the car fixed or, or anything. Uh, so maybe we can make a mandate to the negotiating team to meet weekly, uh, show that uh, it's, it's a priority for the city. Uh, making once a month meetings is not really a good faith effort. So it would be great to try to meet maybe weekly, have weekly communications. Um, and then again, it's, of course, you get what you pay for. Uh, we all want good quality products, good quality employees to give services to the people. There's a lot of needs in the city. You have very hard jobs, and I implore you and thank you all, and I really like working projects with you guys. So I think I covered a few topics there, so I, I cede my time to the rest of you. Thank you.